Last meeting in February, and I would like to invite you to join us in the pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. As all of you know, we did not meet two weeks ago because that was our meeting was at the exact same time as the funeral of one of the officers that was killed. And it felt inappropriate for us to meet at that time. So while remembering that, I would like to ask that we have a moment of silence in here just in memory of our two fine young officers who were killed in the line of duty. Thank you. Now we can go ahead and draw approval of minutes. Have you shown an opportunity to look over these minutes?
Yes, sir. I'd like to go ahead and approve the regular mini-congratulations and the executive session, non-meeting. I'll accept the motion.
It's on a motion and a second to approve both the regular session commissioner meetings, which was on January eighteenth of two thousand and twenty-two, and the executive session, which was on also January eighteenth of two thousand and twenty-two. All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. And then we have. What's the executive order?
The executive order from the, you signing the paper on the kind. Kind of like making a motion to approve the executive order, two thousand and twenty-two, oh two.
Second motion. A motion and a second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And then we are down to ratification of the claim, approval of claims.
I'll make a motion to approve all that for the minute of the ratification.
Just, it's just about the executive order.
Oh, ratification.
I'm gonna just approve all.
So we don't need to do the other. I'll make a motion for today's claim.
All claims. Both the February seventh and February.
Well, where are you?
That day.
Oh, okay. So that's what she was.
All right, all right. So your.
My motion is just for today's claim.
February twenty-first of two thousand and twenty-two claim. All right, Lauren, second. So I got a motion and a second on the claims, all in favor, please say aye. Motion passed. And our first item of business, we're only thirty seconds late, is medical director Emily Becker. Good morning.
Good morning. Just to introduce myself, I'm Dr. Emily Becker. I am a family doctor practicing full-time in Howard County. I'm also the Howard County health officer. I live in Oklahoma, Indiana. I took on the role of Carroll County health officer when the previous health officer, Dr. Dutter, resigned and there was no one in Carroll County willing to replace him. The state reached out basically to the health officers in all the surrounding counties, asking if any of us would take it on. And then there were no responses. And then Joyce Yoder reached out to me several times and asked if I would take it on. And I agreed to, and board approved it. And at the time, I would say we had a fairly functional health department. Unfortunately, since taking on the role, we've lost multiple full-time and part-time employees, and we've been unable to replace them. Keeping employees in the department seems to have been the issue for the last several years. But within the last six months, we lost a full-time septic environmental inspector, a preparedness coordinator, a receptionist, who was also a registrar. And then with the passage of Joyce Yoder, we lost our full-time nurse. We had a part-time nurse, and she also left. We currently have the department, myself, I come over on Monday afternoons. And then we have a part-time food inspector and our septic environmentalist currently is working on it as needed basis only. So during all of this, I was approached by some members of the Cass County Health Department, asking if we needed some help, which we did. So they actually currently are doing all of our death and birth certificates just out of, you know, just goodness, they've offered to do that. They've also reached out to some of our local schools, like Delphine for Carroll County, and set up some shock clinics without any formal agreement, they've done that. And so eventually, we started talking about a possible merger. I met with representatives from the State Department of Health and the Cass County Health Officer, Dr. Diddy, their administrator, Serenity Alter, and the president of their board on two occasions. And then I've met with their administrator on several other occasions and tried to discuss how this might happen, what has to happen to make it go through. I reached out to Dr. Sharma. He is the health officer of the only merged, or what we call a joint health department in the state, which is Warren Fountain. They merged in nineteen sixty-six, so it's been a while since any other health departments have tried to merge. I know that the state has been looking into this more and more, especially with COVID pandemic, and so a lot of smaller counties really struggle with having enough staff to handle all the extra responsibilities that befit upon them. So they are kind of looking at this as something that may work out for a lot of the smaller rural counties. So at this point, I believe a merger, or it's technically the forming of a joint health department, would be an advantage to Carroll County. I discussed it with the Carroll County Board of Health at our last meeting, we discussed it, and they were in approval of going forward with it. One major advantage, I think, to Carroll County is that if we were able to complete and become a joint health department, we would basically have a ready-made health department put right in our laps. We would need to hire some additional employees, but these would be to fill spots that are already budgeted for. So we would not be asking for any additional employees or any additional money if we did joint. So we would not be looking to add any new positions. And we wouldn't have to train anybody, you know, we'd have fully trained people ready to start. Cass County has a lot of additional programs that they offer that we don't have here. And the health advisory district could be here, but I don't think it would fit that. Those are just, and I'll give, I have copies of those. Those are just some additional programs. I mean, we do some of this here, but those are additional things that they do in their county that could be added to the things that people from our county could access, that we don't have currently. And a lot of this is grant-funded. All you need to do is apply for the grants, but you do have to have somebody that knows how to do it and then knows how to get into money. So none of these programs would require additional funding either. So the goal would be, like I said, that the residents of Carroll County could then access these. The only downside I would see is that some grants are awarded by the state to a jurisdiction, not based on population. So there are some grants, like a preparedness grant, where they, we would only qualify for one grant, rather than two, as two separate counties. So that's essentially half the money. But those are pretty few and far between. One of those is a preparedness grant, which currently we can't access right now because we don't have anyone to write the grant or do the deliverables. So right now, it's, for example, it's twenty-five thousand dollars. We've applied for it, but we have no one to complete what we call the deliverables. So we don't have access to that money anyway. So, and one stipulation that I've told Cass is that I do think if we were to complete some type of joint health department, they would have to maintain a presence here. And they're agreeable to that. So basically, we would still have, it's not like everything would move to Cass. We would still have a full-time employee available in the office downstairs, whether it be a nurse or receptionist, registrar. We would still have people in this county available. It's not like it would all go to that county, and people would have to drive to Cass to access the services. We would still have shock clinics here, we would still have the liaisons with the schools here, that type of thing. But we would basically be sharing employees. And Mr. Johnson can probably speak more to this, the legalness of it. So basically, what has to happen is both sets of commissioners would have to write in ordinance in order to create a joint health department. It is truly just up to the commissioners, and nobody else in the county really has to be involved in it. Once that happens, and I believe it goes to the state, the state would approve it, and both counties would end up being joined under one fiscal body, which means basically one council would control all the money, which would likely be the larger county, which is Cass. Cass has about forty thousand population, I believe about twenty thousand here. So, and that's generally, when you look at, say Fountain Board, what they do, they divide the fiscal responsibility based on population. So it'd probably be a two-thirds, one-third division. Now, the board, however, so there would still be, there would be one joint board of health, but it would be made up of members from both Carroll County, or Carroll and Cass County. And that would be something that, you just have to have a minimum of seven members. But you could certainly have stipulate that there are four members from Carroll, four members from Cass. However, you'd want to work it out, and that would determine your budget, you know. So in that sense, you would still have control, the county would still have control over where your money went. Now, the council, like I said, would, the council would control the finances would likely be Cass, since it's the larger county. So council here would still have to approve it, but it would likely be mostly under the control of Cass. So like I said, but the advantage is that with a board, so the board would be made up of members from both counties. And then that's where the control, that Carroll still has control over what happens to money. And then all employees would likely be under one county, so they'd all have one set of benefits, so that they could go back and forth between and work in both counties. So like, the advantage of this too is if you have someone on vacation, you know, we only have one registrar here, you know, death certificates don't have to wait. You have someone else in another county that can come over and do that, so things don't get put on hold. Commissioners would still act completely separately as far as the ordinances that affect the board of health. I know in Warren Fountain, they try to get together, make sure that they're similar, so that there isn't confusion between the two counties, but they still act separately. So the only thing that is merged is the health department. And again, any ordinances that you would pass in relation to health department would be separate, so. And then I think that's about, yeah. Like I said, I really feel like it would, if this could work, it would be a big advantage actually to Carroll County, like I said, with the current state, with things in pandemic. It's been found that with these smaller rural counties, not having, you know, much staff, we really depend on volunteers a lot, and here, I think they look great. But you can't depend on volunteers forever. And so, do you have any other questions?
How often will the office be open here in Carroll County?
We would expect to be open the same amount of time it is now. So five days a week, with the exception of the Wednesday afternoon when the courthouse is closed.
So would our services be fully there in those four and a half days? Or they'd just be, well, you only do shots on Tuesdays and Thursdays, then people have to.
It would likely be that way, that only shots, there would only be shots on certain days, but actually, that's the way it functioned before. Joyce would have shock clinics on, I believe, Tuesdays and Thursdays, usually because she would have someone to help her, such as a part-time nurse. So in the past, that's the way it was. I know that for flu shots and stuff, people could somehow just walk down and get one, or Joyce was available to give a COVID vaccine. But in general, that's how it was before. And actually, before Joyce came, I think that that's how it was, we only had a part-time nurse. So shots were only available at half-days or certain days a week.
Because somehow this has got out to the public, and people come to me and saying, well, I don't want to drive to Cass County on the day I can only get off to go get a shot.
Well, and like I said, that likely, we would see, you know, like I said, it would probably still be two days a week, maybe more, but, you know, people could make arrangements. If it looked like there was a certain day of the week, we could have somebody here to do that. But as it stands now, we have no one to get shots. So it's still an improvement, and we've not had, as far as I know, anyone apply for our full-time nurse or part-time nurse position.
So what about our environmental officer position? Would that go to Cass or stay with us?
That would stay with us, we have to still have one. So it could be someone that was, it would likely be someone that is full-time, but could be shared between both. And we would still have a food inspector, so we would still have to have all of those services available here because part of that panel, like I said, if you have a, or we can do that ten-minute, talks about the requirement. Sorry, it's that one. The requirements of a, of a health department, every health department is, it's got a list of things that are required by state statute. So all of those, and it's kind of divided, it's, it's pretty wordy, but it's divided into two, yeah, you can put it up there, two separate lists of things that health departments are required to do by state statute and then can do. And actually, immunizations are not actually required by state statute to be provided by a health department. That's under the category of often are provided, but are not required. So actually, immunizations are not something that we have to do, but something that as a health department, we feel like is worthwhile, so we offer to the public.
So basically, we're only going to be missing our health nurse and vital records keeper, everything else we're still going to have.
Yes, yeah, you would still have all the same services, and in fact, more.
So why don't we just go ahead and try to hire these two positions? Because I've never seen it advertised.
Well, it's.
It's been advertised on newspapers, and I think they even put it in the paper.
Yes.
Because, you know, taxpayers' money, they're still going to be paying the same amount of taxes with less service. That's the way I look at it.
Well, it actually may be more service, because like I said, right now, as it stands, and even before the way it was, there were a lot of, like I said, what Cass, things that Cass County does that have just never been offered in this county, because there haven't been the personnel or, or the money to do it. So the way I look at it, we'd be getting more services than we had in the past. Granted, yes, we had a full-time nurse available, we had a full-time registrar available, but there were a lot of grants that, like I said, are available that were just never applied for. And again, like I said, the, the reality of it is what we offer for full-time nursing or for a RN salary and part-time, we are likely not going to get many applicants. And that would require asking, like I said, for, for more money, and we really don't want to have to do that, so.
Why, we thought Joyce did the bone and beyond, and we're against that, right?
She did, she absolutely did, and we were lucky to have her.
Does Cass County now have a registrar there?
Yes, they have several, I believe they have, it's listed on that second page, there's three or four of them. She was an LPN, but yeah, she functioned at a very high level, yes. Yeah, yeah, she did.
Do you know offhand there was a salary is in Cass County for a registered nurse?
I don't, offhand, I'd have to look that up. It's, it's pretty similar, and honestly, public health nursing in general doesn't, you know, pay nearly as much as what, say, private nursing does. And that's why all health departments have struggled, you know, to keep an RN on staff. You know, most of the people that do it, you know, are pretty dedicated to it, as Joyce was, you know, who knew it because they, you know, who knew it. But like I said, since Joyce's passed, we've not had anyone apply for that position.
Has it been the council to ask for extra money from these positions?
Yes, we have, we have, and they did give raises this past year, they gave seven percent raises. So that was much appreciated. But unfortunately, the way public health works, it's still vastly under what, especially now, what, what private nurses can make. And so it's, it's just, it's a struggle all around for all health departments.
We're still paying, still collecting all the taxes, we might gain a little bit. I don't know, I can think about this. It just don't seem right to have somebody over there, another in town, county, to go all the way to Cass County to get a shot if they can't make it here the day they have it. I think it's a big inconvenience, that's the way I see it. I see your part of it.
Yeah.
I'm going to go on public record and say, I think before you came on, which I thought you'd been doing a very good job, our health department dropped the ball in keeping our health department fully staffed and asking for our raises and stuff. I believe our councils would, would step up and give our, our extra pay. Just because I think it's so important to have our own health department, for our own people.
Well, I think the health department did ask for raises every year. And I think that was some of Dr. Dutter's frustration when he left, and speaks indirectly, but he's passed that information on, so.
My wife was employed in the health department here for several years. And prior to that, she had to employ the statutory account of the health department. And I believe the difference in pay was close to five dollars. Given that she made less here than what she did down there. Lauren, you're going to make comments on that?
No, I mean, with the problems we have currently staffing matters. And it's kind of been difficult to fill in. I don't see what giving people the fill-in positions is going to really get it easier any time soon. Getting qualified people. Cass County does have more doctors than we have in Carroll County. It's hard to fill our board up with requirements that the state wants us to have.
Listen, I'm glad Danny's built up the health.
Yeah, I'm very thankful for that. Very thankful for you, it's for your commitment.
Have you talked to their commissioners?
I have not yet.
Because I had talked to one, and we, we needed those if you wanted to or not.
And I'm aware of that. Serenity, I know all of them, their administrator, and I've spoken to all of them. So I know that they're aware of this discussion, obviously, because they would have to be a big part of this. And yeah, they are concerned, they have a great health department, and they don't want to overburden their staff either. Although, like I said, the idea would be that they could fill in, that they would also help to hire people to fill those positions that we have open now. So like I said, we wouldn't have to ask for additional positions, but we currently have multiple open positions that would then fill that workload, etc.
Yeah, and have an easy task county and get learned about, and so maybe more than our former open.
I can see, at this point, I can see it'd be an advantage to, I think, to Carroll County. People can also access there what they access here, my friend.
Absolutely, yeah.
So they have that option.
So if they did it elsewhere in Cass, they could certainly get things done there. But yes, they should have the same services available to them here.
And you can go Walmart and get your shots.
Right, you can go to your doctor's office and get your shots, you go to CVS, and you know. Yeah, actually, the family health services clinic has kind of taken over giving all the shots that we want to.
Lauren?
Yeah, as councilman, I would definitely support this. It seems like a no-brainer to me, if they've got four registered nurses on them, like, it, it just makes too much sense. You know, if getting, you can't just make a twenty thousand dollar reward that you were in Carroll County, you know, it's, it's going to be hard to fill those positions. Joyce worked for years, and I was hoping she'd keep working for years, but it didn't happen, so. It's going to be tough to fill those positions, and I don't know, it seems like a, a answer to the prayer.
What does Cass County mean again?
I don't know, I need to check this out. The commissioners, yeah.
Yeah, next week. It's tomorrow at one P, or tomorrow one P.
Yes, sir. I kind of like to hear the word.
Sure, because it would be something that actually you guys would all have to work together on.
Right. I mean, I'm not against it, I'm just, I'm just trying to weigh both.
Absolutely.
Brother Scott back there?
First and foremost, I want to thank Dr. Becker. She has gone above and beyond, she's done all of her responsibility. Since we've, we've lost all these folks, you know, tragically and otherwise, she's really stepped up and done a fantastic job. Number two, I think that, you know, I've had the conversation with a number of folks, especially when we just had the, the open enrollment for, for the election, the midterm election, I mean, there just doesn't happen to be the number of folks that understand public service, I think, like Joyce did. We were highly blessed to have Joyce for all these years. I think sometimes this younger generation, it's, I don't want to say me, 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 but they don't understand public service and having a purpose for the citizens in, in the community as Joyce did. So I think, you know, trying to find someone to fill those positions, not just one, but multiple positions, are going to be difficult, I, I truly believe that. So I, I've thought about the merger between the two. I don't honestly think that we will be losing services, as Dr. Becker stated. They offer other programs that we don't, and we might want to institute in here, which is a benefit to our citizens. So I think it's, it's definitely worth a, a good stern look, I definitely.
Yes, another thing that the health department handles for the county is the subject permits for new homes. And we have pretty much been on a standstill for several months on those. Randy's doing the best he can, but with so many requirements to the state, we've had some of this just kind of lingering around all that. So just keep in mind that sanitation, environmental positions, key people, it's trying to build new homes as well, so.
You can't do soil, Randy can do soils now. Craig is available as needed, yeah. Craig's available as needed to come over and do those, but as things get busier in the spring too, that's when we'll be looking at that, that workload going up and whether Craig can do that in time and fashion. Definitely were asked about grants. So the grants would still be one fiscal body, they would all go under the joint, and then they would likely be handled by Cass. But again, in a lot of cases, it would be, most cases, it would be based on population. So it would be twice the, you know, actually, two-thousand-type amount of money.
Or twenty thousand.
Yeah, or forty thousand, so, but yeah, so most grants given by the state are population-based. There are a few, like I said, that are jurisdiction-based, which is preparedness, and one of the COVID grants was, was based on jurisdiction. So there are, there were some grants that you would actually call by for less money as one jurisdiction, but the vast majority of the grants are population-based. So when you go from twenty thousand to sixty thousand, you automatically qualify for more money. But it would be all the time. They would be the ones writing the grants, and if they're determined to be a fiscal body, then they would be the ones handling the grants.
Would you still be our medical director?
I would not. That would have to go to Dr. Diddy. She is currently the health officer in Cass County, and you can only have one health officer. And since, and then, like I said, I'm already a health officer in Howard County, so.
And she's on board with this?
Yeah, she is, actually, I spoke to her twice about it, so yeah. As long as, I think as long as her staff, you know, are in charge, or at least part of the merger, she's worked with them for a long time, so.
Any other comments out here? Yeah.
Along the lines of what Cameron just said regarding the subject permits, it, it's a, I know that Craig is trying to do what he can, but he's only here a few hours, and it's, it's a full-time job. And I just want to make sure there's enough capacity with this, or is it your proposal to hire another?
Yes, we would, yes, we would fill the current spot.
But would it provide short-term relief in the meantime?
Yes, it would, because they could actually send over, if we merged, then their environmentalists could come do the work here. They'd be allowed to, as it was a joint county health department. And so until we could get that other person hired to make up for the volume, this is, it's actually what they're doing with the registrar right now. So their registrar is actually doing our death certificates currently for us. We asked the state to kind of let them do that, because we didn't have anyone to do it right now.
Is their employees on board with this? Because it seems like they just picked up a lot of extra work.
They actually are. I was kind of surprised at that too, because I asked Serenity about that, and she said she has several that aren't willing to go back and forth. You know, I don't know, that's what, that's what she said. I'm sure there are some that won't want to, but, or may not. She may just have some employees that come here two days a week, and they're three days a week, you know, or something like that, or people that maybe live closer that may choose to be the person here more of the time. But the difference is they have multiple people in each position. So like I said, there's always kind of a backup, just again, because we're a bigger county and bigger employees.
So like I said, there's always kind of a backup, just again, because we're a bigger county and bigger employees.
Would we be putting this strain on CAS County who would take some employees out of the office?
Um, at, at this point, they said no, but again, we would be hiring extra employees to fill our currently unfilled spots.
So if we hired employees, we'd have to pay in the CAS County rates?
Yeah, yes. They would be at, and honestly, I would say I don't know that their rates are that different than ours. I've seen them before. I can't quote you the exact numbers. I don't think their rates are that much higher. But yes, they would be paid as CAS County employees. But again, the division financially, I think, would likely still be one-third, two-thirds, but that would be something that'd have to be worked out.
And then again, I'll go back to my first one question. We've still got to hire to put up here. Why is it merging?
Can I answer that question? They would be employees of, of the joint district and they would be, they would be hired, hired by the, the joint department. They would not be hired by individual counties. They would be employees for purposes of pay, benefits and so forth of CAS County. We have budgeted for positions that are unfilled, that have, have not been paid. As I understand it, when the, if, if the, if the two commissioners adopt a resolution agreeing to form the district of the joint, joint health department, the state board, the council, DLGF will basically portion the, the budgets and the money that Carol County has already accumulated for payment of salaries. That, that becomes the asset or revenue of the joint health department, not of CAS County, but of the joint health department. Both funds stay health funds. They, they can't be used for any other purpose, diverted or transferred or it has to be used for the health department purposes. So even if you, if you form this in the middle of the year, DLGF will, will, will do the budget. It'll be a budget for a new multiple county health district, just as Warren County. And it's good that we've got at least two counties in the state that have had experience with this since nineteen sixty-six. So we don't, we're not reinviting the real. And from what I'm understanding from DLGF and Emily is understanding from the state party of health, this is something that other counties are looking at. So I think if the board is interested in pursuing this, I think it needs to express, express that. Because this, this, they're called a, I think you need to express your interest in pursuing if that's what your interest is. So that the CAS County board usually will have some indication that, that there is interest in pursuing. This is not agreeing to it. This is not, you can't vote on it today. There has to be, have to be two ordinances prepared. And the, it's the board commissioners that decide it. The health boards don't. But CAS County's health department is the one that approached us about this. We do not, they're not wanting to take us over. They're doing a lot of our work right now. And it seemed to be unnatural. So that's really, I see how this, this got started.
When you said the, they're doing the salaries, well, what if our salaries are twenty thousand dollars lower than we have come up with that extra money?
It'll be use, new, new salaries. It, it won't be the salaries of Carol County. It will be, it will be the salaries of the joint health department.
DLGF will approve the budget on it, not just Carol.
But still, we still have to come up with the extra money to pay that other physician if it's a higher-paid position.
Only, only one-third of that, technically.
There won't be any additional money. Now, that, they'll take what, what, what is there and, and, and make a new budget for the joint health department. And it'll all be health fund. It's, the statute is very clear. There's no paying somebody on the side or anything like that, or nobody gets enriched by the, the joint. Making a joint health department. It goes into the health fund. And the, the board of health functions just the way they do locally, you know. They, they look at it, they make a request. The request goes to the, goes to CAS County council. They, if they approve a budget, then, then that amount is set because it's, it's a, it's a two-third, one-third, just like it is in Warren, the valid count.
Then who will control the tax rate?
That's the DLGF. And that's where they get their budget. It'll be a budget from CAS County.
They'll also be, DLGF will also looking, when, when, when local governments go together to do things, they make sure that the taxpayers aren't paying twice for the same service. That's the other thing. That's in the statute too. DLGF's supposed to make sure there's not a duplication of, of service or, and so forth. So that's, that's baked into the, the statutes that we have. So my suggestion would be, especially since it's the county commissioner meeting tomorrow, would be for this board to take at least some step in the form of a motion to pursue a multiple county health district with CAS County. And that's, you're interested in pursuing that to sustain. That would be, not saying it would be same, you're not going to pursue it or you just want to think about it. I think before we can start engaging in actual details of what it would look like to bring it back to the people, you need to express that you're interested in pursuing it here.
Pardon?
Instead of just basically dropping?
Yes, right.
I don't want to drop it. I'm just trying to look out for the people putting me up here. Because, you know, we're, we form our districts. We're their word. You know, I don't want to hurt our people, our services. And the same way we do it.
Absolutely. And I think at least looking at, you know, it's not, again, like you said, it's not like it's a one deal.
And then, you know, it's not going to stay. It's like, we just come up. We'll have a board that, if it does happen, that can work for us. It's been done since, how many years ago? How many?
Sixty-six.
Sixty-six, we said six, yeah, six years.
Three years, a little bit, you know, with my eighty years. Fifty-six.
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 I have heard nothing but wonderful comments about you, Dr. Becker, and, and a lot of those were from Joyce. She was a good friend. And I appreciate it very much how you have handled everything. I think it's too bad that we're in the situation that we're in where we don't have staffing. Everybody, every business, every, everything is having trouble with staffing. I, I can't get, the, the number of like, my wife and, my wife and my son are on a restaurant in, in Florida. And the number of high school applicants that we get over there to work is zero, none. We haven't, we get nobody wanting to work there. And we are now to the point of paying between fourteen and sixteen dollars an hour starting wage for just somebody to clean tables and do that. Nobody wants to apply. So I, I can understand the problems you have with trying to hire a registered nurse and things like that. My first, my first impulse on anything like this, if it consolidates with, we, we had some people who thought we ought to consolidate our nine-one-one with White County or consolidate our Jable with White County. My first impulse is no. I, I don't want to do that because I want Carol County to be as autonomous as possible. And, and to be, I mean, I know we're not. We're a subset of the state. But I just have a firm conviction that the best government is the local government. And I, I hate to see that go any way away from the hands of the local people. Not that I don't want to see it go away from my hands. It's just that the people here should be able to control it. But I'm certainly willing to listen. And I appreciate both my colleagues here's comments on it. A lot of the things that Steve expressed are the questions I would have asked. So thanks for getting those out. I guess at, at this point, I just have to see a lot more before I say, yeah, let's do this. I, I want, I want to know for a better understanding that we are really doing the right thing for the people of Carol County. I, I don't, real quick, I don't know, I've never met this health officer over in CAS County. I don't know this doctor at all. I don't know that losing you from doing it is a good thing for the people of Carol County. So we, I have to think about it a lot. So now Ted, you suggested that we just have a, a res, or a, a motion that says that we're interested in talking.
Interested in pursuing.
Interested in pursuing.
The possibility of a joint health.
They don't buy this.
A merger, if you want to call it merger.
If you don't, if you don't buy this, then it's just a, it opens it up where we can discuss.
The statute pretty well weighs out what that is for everybody. The, the ordinances aren't unique. This ordinance will look very similar to the one that, that Warren County used to do. So the statute, there are protections for the taxpayers as well as for the participants in that.
Do they do properties that are nuisance too for CAS County? They get that position?
Yeah, yes. They're my whole perspective is that. So yeah, that's something we've been lacking for quite a while.
And it's something that we need.
Yes, yes.
And when my, when my wife held a position down here and she did the environmental, did, did that. Along with doing those subject checks and all those. There were times that were just overwhelming to get it all done. And to, to think of that we're now in a situation where Craig, Rich come out for a few hours a week and do it. I, it doesn't work. We need a, well, Mr. Walton's standing out there on getting permits for him. It, it's not. So I would entertain a motion, however you view.
We have no one to strike at.
I would really pursue.
That's ten states.
Moving the order, looking for, looking for. Looking to do a move for order. An interest entity? I'll send it to you. Can we talk again on Mark's, maybe after they move?
Sure.
Sure.
How, how do you wish, can we take this to CAS County?
Are you going up to talk to them or how?
I wasn't. I needed to talk to you guys first before I went to them. So I wanted to make sure I had your approval before I spoke to any of them.
Maybe you didn't have noticed. I guess it's up to the, the helpful. Do you need anything else? Need to vote on? Should we vote? No, we haven't voted on yet.
Would, would her health nurse be able to come and talk to us at our next meeting? Will we do it here?
Sure, yeah. Yeah. This is what we'd ask. We thought about it coming here today, but again, I wanted to speak to you guys first before I run anybody from CAS County.
Well, I've always found that even local government moves at the speed of a glacier. So we're, we're, this is going to take a while to get done. Now, I've lost, I've lost track of what the motion.
The motion to pursue. You're interested in pursuing a formation of a merge health department.
Okay, that's the motion?
Yeah.
I would call for a vote. Any, any other comments before we do? Yeah, I would call, did you want to? Oh, I thought, yeah, I thought you were wanting to say, I would call for a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
One thing I found is people from CAS County, or that much, didn't. Something like City of Atlas or some people on the ass. Thank you, Dr. Miller.
Thank you very much. And we are ready for Kim. Good morning, Kim.
Good morning. I've got a couple items for you. First, I'd like to request quotes to, request quotes for electrical work done at our shop. Actually, out in, out in the yard to add lock heaters for our trucks, if you haven't had these. They have to get it early and start the trucks up and make sure, hope they start, especially on the cold days. I'm surprised they haven't had these in the past, but I'd like to send out for quotes for, to a couple electricians to get work done, probably this spring.
Does most of your people take their credit?